On Tuesday, January 21st, 2020. For the record, all city council members are present this evening along with members of our staff. We welcome the public that's here and other employees. We're glad to have you with us this evening. I've asked Steve Brooks, our city attorney, if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we would like to take a moment of silence. Usual in our city council meetings, as we take a moment of silence this evening, we'd like to remember those who are serving in our military around the world and here at home that served to protect the many freedoms we enjoy in this nation that we live in. We'd also ask you to remember those who are serving, our first responders, who put their self in harm's way regularly in our behalf. We'd ask you to remember our city council this evening and the decisions that they entertain and make this evening, that they might be in the best interest to those that we serve. We'll now take a moment of silence. We now have a period of time for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to come forward to the microphone, they're welcome to do that, share any ideas, concerns you might have with the city council. We would ask you again, as you come to the microphone, state your name and also, if you would, keep your timed about three minutes. Time is now yours for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, move on next to presentations and reports. First one is a mayor's report. I just had something I'd like to share with you. Quite often, our police and fire departments are involved with other agencies in the county and even in other counties at time, or heavy rescue and people are, they go to other counties to help and always get back good reports and I'm always proud and what I see them do. I think we, our police and fire probably as good as any police and fire departments in the state. I know the training they do, I see what they do and I know the passion of the, of their chiefs and those that serve on their, those who serve and what kind of job they do. But a few days back, I think y'all remember, we had that airplane crash in Roy and it was tragic incident. It happened about three, three o'clock in the afternoon and our, our police and fire were involved in that as far as helping and I, I received a phone call at five o'clock, that's just two hours after the accident occurred and it was for a very grateful mayor, Mayor Dan Doy of Roy and he shared some thoughts and thanked us. I'd like to play you that little recording he left me, the, the voicemail, but he, he was very appreciative counsel of the, what our, our folks did up there. I saw some of the pictures there of the incident. I know our vehicles were parked right, right in the middle of it, right from the get-go and I think we should be very proud of their service and what they did.
Just wanted to call you and tell you I appreciate your team. You know, we had an airplane go down. You had your fire and your police on site rather quickly and helping us out to manage the situation. I just want to tell you thanks. Your team has always does a great job. You have a good day. We're going to work through our challenge we got now. Thanks.
Thought that was pretty nice that he'd take time that quickly into what went on up there and thank our folks for participating. So I wanted to, I already sent an email to police and fire and expressed Mayor Dan Doy's thoughts and also thanked him for the great service that they provide here in our community and in neighboring communities. Next, we'll move on to council committee, assignment reports, any, anything from your committees. Okay, thank you. Move on next to the city administration report, Mr. Worthing.
Thank you, Mayor Searle. Council tonight included in your meeting packets this evening is our report for last month of December, last month of the year. I'd like to bounce around if I can a little bit. Department reports are included therein. The report of department activities would note the fire department and police department actions of the month and you'll notice obviously what Mayor Searle mentioned, the aircraft going down in Roy. We also had a significant fire to Aaron's furniture and rental business there on Riverdale Road during the month. Found some building concerns and some things that perhaps contributed to the fire. So our building official and our fire marshal are working through those issues with Aaron's, trying to get them back in service as soon as possible. Some of the remodel items in the building were, were a hindrance to the fire, getting the fire out quickly, so we're working through those. But that was a lot of work that the fire department went through in his continuing efforts to get them back in business. I'd just like to note that. I'll come back to the January anniversaries. Our staffing authorization plan, which we missed in our last month's report to you, is now, in this month, you can see we're two, two three-quarters FTE down from the authorized staffing plan, which is good. We've got a couple hires we're working on in Public Works right now. The community development report is included as well in your packet, council. You can see a couple items that are ongoing there with the quick quack, car wash is under construction still, a couple other businesses that are forthcoming. The three-story business office building up on top in the West Bench RDA area, Brent sees it every day because he lives up there, but that's getting close to being occupied, so we're excited about that. One thing that we hear often, Mike and I do when we attend some of the economic development meetings for the county of Weber is that we need more business office space in Davis and Weber counties and we're trying to work on that in some, some areas of the community. That's one of them. The finance report is also included in your packets as well, council. Tonight, you'll have your, the presentation of the audit for fiscal year 2018, 2019 as part of your meeting this evening. I would like to note the January anniversaries for our employees. There's a, there's one of them here tonight, Cindy Draper. Congratulations, Cindy. Cindy has 25 years of service and so that's why she's attending tonight. We like to have our employees, as you know, council, come on their fifth years, every five years, once they reach those milestones to come in and we present them a certificate and a gift certificate for their service and recognize them for their efforts and, and service that they provide for the residents of our city. And that being said, Cindy has 25 years, so we'll bring her up here in a second. In the police department, Stacy Comer, our business administration department, Stacy deals with a lot of day-to-day activities, a lot of HR issues, insurance issues, day-to-day balancing, utility payments and oversight of those activities. Stacy also has her, her fifth year anniversary, so she has 15 years of service. She's not with us this evening. Cody is though, so Cody works, works with her day in and day out. Letitia Tooms in our, she's a prosecuting attorney that we utilize. Letitia and Terrell, also, we hired those two together. They have three years of service. They work in our court. And then Cody is with us tonight. This is his one-year anniversary. Actually, Cody's been with us more than one years, but it's, when he came back a year ago, we were all jumping up and down, so congratulations, appreciate you, Cody, on all you do and all that effort and work that you do is on display tonight as we present the audit, so appreciate that. That being said, Cindy, you want to come up? Scott as well?
Just a little, yeah. Scott, you want to come and, it's an honor to, Cindy, tonight to recognize you for 25 years of service. That's a long, long time and, and you've done some really great service. I'm going to turn to Scott, he works with you directly.
Cindy is an incredible employee. In all reality, she, she has over 31 years. She worked for Riverdale for a couple of years, went out to Davis County when the chief that was here became the sheriff out there and then she came back to Riverdale in 95, so she's coming up on about 32 years and I keep threatening her that she cannot retire until I decide I'm done, because she's literally like my right and my left hand. She does an incredible job with our records, but one of the biggest jobs that she has is she's our evidence custodian and evidence is a real nightmare, especially in today's world with the way we have to track everything and, and she keeps an evidence room that is very pristine and it's just in incredible shape. We're proud of our evidence and we've never had any issues with any evidentiary items at all and so she is invaluable to us with the amount of work she does. She's got a great attitude. She's open to change, which is hard sometimes, I think, when you're in a job for a long time. You know, sometimes you don't like to change when you've, you've been doing it forever, but she's very adaptable and helps us make really positive changes all, all of the time. So I'm grateful to her and everything she does for the police department.
Thanks, Chief. Roger.
Again, council, just like to present these employees each, each time we meet and the service that they do often goes unnoticed and that's why we do this. And Cindy, thank you. I know keeping track of records in my office is a challenge. That's why there's piles of paper everywhere, but you should see Steve's office, so. I commend you in what you do, day in and day out. You come in and you take care of those important items that in some cases can really impact the people's lives that are associated with those items in either a crime or a victim of a crime. And so I really appreciate all that you do and congratulations again on 25 years with us and the other years with others, so appreciate you.
In 25 years, I haven't changed a bit.
Same girl, right?
Yes.
Why don't you step back here with us so Dave can get the pictures and give you this certificate for 25 years of faithful service and we appreciate all you do and you're still friendly when we come in and talk nice and it's always, always nice to visit over there, so. Thank you for all you do, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Roger. Next, we have presentation from Utah Transit Authority. We have Beth Holbrook with us here this evening. We'd like to welcome her. I'm going to ask her if she'll maybe kind of introduce herself a little bit. I know she represents Weber County and some of the other counties here in the north, but maybe you can just tell us a little bit about yourself. We're happy to have you here. You've been here once before, haven't you? It seemed like maybe you had. But we appreciate having you with us tonight, so. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to, to be here tonight. For the record, my name is Beth Holbrook and I am the Utah Transit Authority trustee is the official title. That represents Davis, Weber and Block Solder County, so I get both ends of Weber in this scenario and it's a great opportunity and I'm thrilled to be representative of your needs in your area. A little bit about myself, I'll just tell you, I, my previous role, I had an opportunity to be a city councilwoman in Bountiful City, so I'm from Davis and I thank you for your service because I know what you're sitting in is, is it's a tough seat and we appreciate it as communities and as a neighboring community, although further south. I wanted to take an opportunity to talk about some of the structural changes with the UTA, just in case, and, and by the way, please feel free to ask any questions at any time. I will do my best to answer them. And so as you know, the new governance structure established, three, it's basically a commission structure, I think is the easiest way to identify that and so what I do and what I try to do is I try to engage as many times as I can with all of the areas that I represent. I had an opportunity to take Mayor Searle on a frontrunner excursion last year and we were glad that he had the opportunity to come. One of the things that, that we look at strategically is we look at what can we do long-term to move people from different areas and as you guys are probably very much aware, the, the development that's going on in, in West Weber County is really extraordinary and we anticipate that there's going to be a lot of growth continuing in this area. You also have many opportunities. For instance, you have Northrop Grumman, I had to pause for a second. Northrop Grumman is doing their facility at Hill Air Force Base in the Falcon Hill area, which I think is going to bring a lot of great opportunities to the community and it's also going to bring some growth challenges as well. I also wanted to talk about, my apologies, I, my phone just closed and I realized I still have it up on the, on the computer. So what I'm going to talk about today is the service that we currently provide in Riverdale and some of the improvements that we're doing and then I wanted to, of course, ask any questions at any time and then I wanted to talk about the new bus stops that are going to be going in. So currently today, the service that you have for bus service here in Riverdale is listed up here and by the way, you are welcome to put this on your website or any other media that you choose to do so, just so that your residents are aware of this. This just really quick highlights the route numbers. So obviously the bus numbers, 456, 470, 472, 640. The ridership that alights, now the 470 is the entire route and that is actually a route that runs from Ogden all the way to Salt Lake City downtown. The, the hours of operation and then the frequency that they run, as you can see, it runs every 20 to 30 minutes in the morning hours for the 470, for instance, and then 30 to 60 at night and then 30 minutes every day on Saturdays and Sundays. And then you can see the hours of operation for each of those routes. We, and noted below, you can see that there's, the, the Riverdale parking ride has 76 average daily boardings and alightings specific to that area and then the express routes are, and the frontrunner station have the totals as well. As you can see, frontrunner has 527 average daily boarding, so that's what we like to see, people are using the service. So this next picture is some of the improvements that we have made for bus stops in the area specific to Riverdale. We've done 13 bus stop improvements since 2016 with Prop 1 funds and this is just an example of one location and you can see what the improvements entail. We try to make sure that any of our higher usage routes get improvements and we do that according to multiple decisions, but basically it's what that route is when, when it's in operation and how many people board at that, at that particular location. This is just a map because me, I'm very visual and I always like to see like how things lay out, so you can see all the routes and how they intersect with Riverdale and continue on through other coun, other cities as well. So does anyone have any questions about this thus far? We're good. Okay. And next I wanted to talk about, I understand that there's, I understand that there's a couple of bus stops that we're working on getting improved and I know there's been some delays and I wanted to apologize about those delays. I, it's not an ideal scenario, but we do want to make sure that we get the service that you need. Some of those areas are higher areas that are utilized. One is in front of the Maverick on Riverdale Road and the other is from, in front of the Buffalo Wild Wings. So we anticipate doing those upgrades to those to get us shelters for both of those and benches and then the one will get a garbage can, I believe is, I, let me just double check here. Those are scheduled to be completed within the, within this week, but I want to make sure that you guys get taken care of, so I'm going to follow up and I'll just double check on Friday because I want to make sure that they don't have any further delays. All of the delays were not UTA, but I recognize that the current ones were and part of that is our facilities, people do multiple things, but they mostly do snow removal in this, in the winters and they got stuck on something else and they got delayed, but this, this week is supposed to be good weather and we anticipate that that will get done. But again, I, I did give you all my cards, so please feel free to reach out if you have any questions and if any of your residents have questions, I'm happy to answer them as well. Going back to what, I, I took Mayor, Mayor Searle on a tour of frontrunner, one of the things that we're looking at is how can we do, how can we move more people? Even as you can see by one of our, one of our earlier slides, even moving a couple hundred people off of the road adds value to the rest of the community and, and you guys have Riverdale Road, you obviously know it in peak hours, that's quite a busy, busy thoroughfare. And what we're trying to do strategically is look at some of the growth patterns that are occurring and see what we can do to, to maximize the service levels that can occur in those particular areas. We, we look at frontrunner as a strategic way to do kind of more of like an express route. I recognize express is a relative term. It doesn't go super fast, but it does go all the way down to Salt Lake and beyond. We also have a couple of express buses as well as localized buses. One of the things that we're seeing in the near future is there's a lot of growth out, again, in, in West Weber County and we want to try to be strategic when we incorporate your areas as well with that bus service moving forward. But that said, we are, we want to look at ourselves as your partner and so if there's anything that we can do, maybe we're not doing it in a way that is working or you had some other questions, I would be happy to see what I can do to take care of the situation. So that is my presentation for this evening. I can certainly go into more details, but it is up to you, so if you have any questions, just let me know. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate it and thank you, Mayor, for the invitation and I appreciate Mr. Worthing. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Beth also served, what, two years ago as president of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, so we appreciate her service there also. Move on next to the consent items. Beth, you're welcome to leave if you, if you'd like to. Consent items. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from January 7th, the city council work session and also January 7th, the city council regular session. Is there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Do we have a motion on the consent items?
Motion to approve consent items.
Second.
Have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor. We'll move on to action item number one. This is consideration and discussion to accept the financial audit for fiscal year 2018 as performed by Christensen, Palmer and Ambrose. Mr. Carden. We also have Jeff Ambrose from the firm with us this evening.
I'll go ahead and start while Cody's getting my slides ready. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It's my pleasure to come and present your fiscal 2019 audit report. I'm not going to go through the financial statements in detail because I'm sure Cody has given you that. I want to give a special thank you to Cody. He's, he prepares your financial statements. A lot of times when we do our municipal audits, we as the auditors wind up writing those, those financial statements. Cody put those together and did a very fine job on those. He does a really good set of audit reports and so you, you already know you have a good guy there, but I just wanted to reiterate that. So yeah, Roger's giving us a hand there. As I said, he, he's probably gone over the numbers with you, so I'm just going to kind of talk about some of the highlights on page, pages one and two. Now, when I give you page numbers, these are of the actual financial statements. They may be different in your PDF file, but these are the financial statement pages. This is our independent auditor's report. This is where we express our opinion on the financial statements and we've expressed an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the highest level of opinion we can render. In going through the audit report, I think we maybe had one, one adjustment, we had to fix one little item as we talked about things and it was just a matter of, of just a quick little fix that we, we had to do. So other than that, it's, everything was nice and clean and, and ready to go. As I said, he does a very good job having everything put together. So clean audit report, clean opinion, and that's what you hope for whenever you get your audit done. Back on page 56, this is what we call the yellow book report. This is, we have to, as part of the audit, evaluate your internal controls over financial reporting and your compliance with certain laws and regulations such as, did you make your payroll tax deposits on time and things like that? This again is a clean opinion. We did not find any material weaknesses in internal control, nor did we find any compliance issues that had to be reported. On pages 57 and 58, this is a separate report required by the state auditor where we have to look at specific areas of Utah code and again, this is a clean opinion, clean report. We did not find any issues pertaining to non-compliance in those areas, nor did we find any internal control issues. And then finally, as far as reports go, there's a thing we call the management letter. I put that on your, on the dais just before I came because I didn't, I forgot to mail that out so Cody could include it in the packet. This is a separate required communication that we're required to give you and again, there are no problems in this report. We did not have to modify our scope. We didn't have any disagreements with management. We didn't have any material adjustments that needed to be made and we didn't have any other significant suggestions that we needed to propose to you. So as far as reports go and letters, everything was clean and, and nice and tidy. Have a couple of graphs here for you to take a look at, just to quickly summarize some of the numbers we looked at. This first one talks about governmental fund revenues and this is a summary, this is a graphic presentation of the revenue amounts shown on page 15 of the financial statements and as you can see, there's a big blue number, a big blue piece of the pie right there and that's your general fund taxes. That was about $7.4 million in total and of that total, $6.7 million comes from sales tax. And so what that continues to show us every year is that your redevelopment efforts have been paying off over the years. You continue to generate tons and tons of money from sales tax revenue and your citizens should be appreciative of that because you're one of the few cities that we audit that do not charge a franchise tax on your utilities and that's because you've got enough other tax revenue coming in from other sources. So that's what, that's what that graph right there represents. This next graph talks about expenditures of governmental funds and the reddish section is the public safety portion. That's the fire and police protection and that's the biggest portion of your general government expenditures throughout the year. You can see the other areas presented there. And then the final graph that I just wanted to show you is a, the governmental fund balances for the last five fiscal years. You can see that that purple bar, which is the total of the fund balances, continues to end You can see that that purple bar, which is the total of the fund balances, continues to increase as we move from right to left there from 2015 to 2019. That's total fund balances restricted, excuse me, restricted and assigned fund balances also have increased some. You'll notice that the green bar doesn't change much. And the reason for that is because there are some statutory limitations on how much you can accumulate in the way of general fund, fund balances. So that, that, that part really hasn't changed a whole lot. You have hardly any debt, and that's a good situation to be in. And based on the, the growth in the fund balances and the, and the net position, I think you're managing your budget well and, and doing a good job of managing your finances. That's a very quick presentation. Any questions I can answer for you?
Looks like you're good, Jeff. So we appreciate you being here and thanks for the audit. I know there's a lot of hours spent in time.
Cody does a lot of the work, and then we just come in and kind of bayonetta wounded. So as, as they say about, as they say about auditors. So, so thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. Okay, move on next to discretionary items. We've got listed on their discussion of council assignments. We're probably not going to talk about that tonight. I'd like to, still need to do a little legwork on that. Talk to Brant. Brant made it known he would like to continue on the mosquito boards. So if others that have assignments, if maybe you'd let me know, or I'll contact you. I didn't accept it, did I? We didn't vote. Thought that was too easy. Sorry. Okay, back to the action item. We need consideration to accept the financial audit for FY 2018, as just explained to you. Do we have a motion on that? Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor. Thank you. Okay, back down to the discretionary items. Those that have assignments, maybe send me a text or send me a note if you are, email and let me know if you'd like to continue. If, I don't hear from you next couple of days, I'll, I'll give you a phone call. We'll maybe try to get those assignments made in February. So. Any other discretionary business, Mr. Ellis?
You mentioned the fire department, what they do. They were on the front page of the standard examiner with ice rescue. They were in the freezing cold. So I think we need to give them an attaboy or something to crawl in there and do that type of training exercise. It's cold in there and I wouldn't want to go in the water like that. So anyway, Public Works, Public Safety and the Fire Department do a great job.
Really do. Thank you. Will look at that. But yeah, that's quite a good coverage on that. That was really good. So. Anything else? Okay, do we have, do we have something?
One item, Mayor. Thank you. Just real quick, if you could hold the date on February 13th, if any of you have time. I received this email today from our study group that's working on the alternative transportation planning effort that we're doing with South Ogden and with Washington Terrace Cities. This was a grant that we received from the Wasatch Front Regional Council to do this plan. And they're holding, the, the planning group, which is Alta Planning, is holding an open house on February the 13th. I don't know what date that is. I didn't look it up, but. The day, excuse me. Thanks, Alan. Anyway, the open house will be from 5:30 to 8:30. If you'd like to attend that, more details will be forthcoming, and I'll send them to you via email once I receive them. So if you want to go see what we've been doing, that'll be a great opportunity.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you.
Great job, Cody. Cody.